Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call this a regular meeting to order. For the record, it is 1:05. If you'll call roll, please.
Mayor Barone?
Present.
Councilmember Hines?
Here.
Councilmember Peralta?
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Here.
Councilmember Cantu?
Here.
Councilmember Cantu, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We remain standing for a few minutes or the brief moment of silence. I know we've had a couple of our employees that have lost loved ones and a few community members that have passed away recently. Brief moment of silence for their families. Council, we have approval of the agenda. So, Mr. Mayor, do you have a second? Second. The motion is second. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantu?
Yes.
Councilmember Hines?
Yes.
And we'll go to our next item. We, again, it's a great opportunity and I don't know, gonna call on Amy or Tamara. Just wanna make sure, not sure who is gonna do it today and it's a great honor, you know, to really applaud one of our employees. I'm gonna go turn the mic over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good afternoon. Good afternoon to the members of the council and Mr. Bellis. I'm very honored this afternoon to present to our Employee of the Month for the month of October, Linda Montoya if you will come up. The employee recognition team has selected Linda Montoya as October's Employee of the Month. Linda has good-natured enthusiasm in everything she does, she has superb working relationships with her coworkers, and displays great dedication to the job. Her positive energy, knowledge of the job, and hard-working skills make her a valuable asset for the town of Taos. Linda's energetic efforts and innovative solutions are a perfect example of her professionalism and dedication to excellent public service to the Taos community. The town of Taos would like to congratulate Linda on this prestigious award. Thank you so much. And in addition to Linda's recognition for the month, she's also being awarded a day of paid leave and two gift certificates.
Linda, thank you for all you do. Thank you. So, we'll go on to presentations. Holy Cross Hospital presentation. Turn to Ms. Linda Chase and I know she has the new, I wanna say temporary CEO or interim CEO. And if you'd like to come and sit with Linda or introduce yourself, we'd love to hear from you.
Ron Davis, interim CEO at Holy Cross. I'm from Hot Springs, Arkansas, retired July 15th. And got a call from the forum, I used to work for them, and ask if I would come and help the hospital during this interim season. My wife came with me to visit. We drove up from Las Vegas. Oh, how gorgeous. Kim said to me, "Are they gonna pay you to do this?" I said, "It's our privilege to be here. What a beautiful area and we're very pleased to be here and do anything we can to help the hospital."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, thank you very much for having this opportunity to be able to be here to present some of the good works that we're doing at Holy Cross Hospital. My name is Linda Chase. I'm a quality officer at the hospital. I've been there for 30 years. Yikes, I was only gonna be here for a few months and that turned into a lifetime. But I'm very happy to say that my time working at Holy Cross Hospital has been the best time of my life. I'd like to talk to you today about our patient and family satisfaction and quality and patient safety. I'll start out with patient and family satisfaction. I don't know if any of you have ever been in the hospital and have received a survey after your discharge from the hospital. This is a CMS survey. It's required of all hospitals that obtain or get money from CMS, Medicare, Medicaid. This survey is given to most patients who fall into a certain diagnosis code. It's not given to absolutely every patient. The only hospitals that are exempt from getting this survey are VA hospitals, cancer centers, and pediatric hospitals. CMS is actually the ones that are in charge of the survey. We distribute the surveys to our patients. They determine how many questions, they determine the type of questions, and like I said earlier, they determine the patients after discharge who are gonna get the surveys. We have very little to do with the survey other than to get the results and report them. It's a standardized survey and, as I said, they are the ones that determine the questions. One of our biggest complaints from our patients and their families is that the survey is quite long, that they ask the same question several different times in hopes that they get the same answer, and this is for statistical purposes. I'm gonna go over some of our scores now. One of the things that they do is they look at both inpatient and outpatient scoring. This is our inpatient and outpatient score combined. And if you look at this, it's called a control chart. And what it shows is that dark line right in the center, this dark line is our mean or our average score, which is right around 89 percent. This other blue line, up and down, is what our score is on a monthly basis. We get the results on a monthly basis. From Avatar International, they're the ones that distribute the survey for us. There are several companies that distribute the survey, Presque Ganey, Healthstreams, Avatar International, there's two or three others. We have no control. We control who can distribute the survey for us, but if we do the survey ourselves, points are taken away from us. And so, it serves us to have another, a third party distribute the survey and collect the data for us. These red lines are upper and lower control limits that tell us that our process or how we're doing our survey is in control. What I wanna show you here, the green line is called a trend line that shows you are your scores going up or down, are you doing well, depending on what you're looking for. In this case, we're not doing as well as we could be because the trend line is going down. We should actually see this trend line going upwards instead of downwards. And what this survey is showing, it's our, a survey from January 2013 through August of 2014. And the reason I wanted to show this was because this really clearly indicates what happens in the hospital is reflected in how our patients see us. Last year in May was when we had our three general surgeons resign. And you can see that that impacted how our patients felt about what was going on in the hospital. Our results went down. We did well. We came back up in September and October. And then in November was when we had the layoffs. And again, our numbers went down. And then in April was when we had the issue with the hospitalists. And you can see that our numbers really dipped and now they're starting to come back up again. So, what's happening in the hospital really is, you know, our community really does reflect how they feel about what's happening in the hospital through our surveys. Next is our inpatient survey. And again, the black line is at about 69 percent. And the difference with this is that when CMS sends the survey out, what they're looking for is those patients who give us top box scores. Top box scores are those patients who give us a nine and 10 out of a scale of nine to 10. So, with this, excuse me, a scale of one to 10, what this shows is that 69 percent of our patients give us top box scores. They're giving us nine and 10 out of the scale of nine, zero to 10 or one to 10, excuse me. So, we're doing well with this. The other thing is, you can see the trend line here is going upwards instead of downwards. And so, our inpatients are feeling like they're getting good care. They're giving us good scores. Again, you can see some of the same period of time where there was some concern about what was going on with the, when the general surgeons resigned, when we had the layoffs in November and December, and then again in April when we had the transition of the hospitalists leaving the hospital and us moving to another company for providing hospitalist Again, willingness to recommend, this is important too. We have an upward trend we have. We wanna make sure that patients feel like they can recommend our hospital to others, feel that the care that they're getting at our hospital is good and that they have no problems in recommending the quality of the care that they get at Holy Cross Hospital to their other family or friends or whomever. We are at about a 71 percent rate here. And to tell you the truth, you know, 71 percent, you think, well, that's not, that's, you know, in most cases, that would be a C. But when you look at our overall score and you compare us to other hospitals, we, most other hospitals are basically in that same range. The range is usually between 75 and 85 percent. So, excuse me, 60, 70 to 80 percent, we're right in the range with all other hospitals responsiveness of staff, this is a big issue. We wanna make sure that our staff are responding to patient politeness, the patients are answering questions, the patients, that employees are answering questions and providing the care that our patients need, patients and their families. And again, you see an upward trend with this. This is some of our, a picture of some of our admissions staff, registration staff. This is generally the first people, people, patients meet when they come into the hospital. So, we've worked with them to really make sure that they're providing good customer service when they're admitting patients into the hospital. This is what I wanted to show you, our national HCAPs. Again, HCAPs is Hospital Consumers Assessment of Health Care Providers and Services. That's that big first slide that I showed you, it's the hospital survey. And this is again showing some of the same data that I showed you in a graph form just a minute ago. The overall rating, 69.06. This is our scores this year. This are our scores a year ago. CMS is always a year behind. So, if you look at this, the reporting period from them is October 2012 to September 2013. For this year, it's January 2013 through August 2014. So, this is the most current data. This is all of our data. This is our data a year ago. This is New Mexico a year ago, and this is the national averages a year ago. So, when you look at this, where were we, where are we today to where we were a year ago? We've made some improvements in some areas and some areas we still need to do some more work. But compared to the state and national averages, we're doing quite well. Again, this is looking at how we compare to our closest facilities or our closest competitors to Rosamos, Presbyterian and Espanola, Santa Fe Indian Hospital and St. Vincent's Hospital. And I can look at this and compare us to other hospitals in the state. I just chose our closest facilities here. And again, this is last year's data. I don't have current data for them on this particular slide, though I can get that, anyone can get that if you go on hospitalcompare.gov and look at their data. Their data is the current data. But you can see where we are now, where we were a year ago, and how we compare to our biggest competitors, if you will, or our nearest other hospitals. Again, this is our overall rating. This is the willingness to recommend. And this is the responsiveness of hospital staff. Any questions about any of this? This is, gets really complicated and it's hard to do it in just a few slides, but if anybody's interested, I'm happy to go over with you in more detail in a private session if you'd like.
Mr. Mayor? Counselor?
Thank you for the presentation. Some numbers that were on there are numbers that are served by number of people that are seen? Is that how that?
No, by the number of people who get the survey and return the survey. We have, we send about 200 surveys out on a monthly basis, 100 to inpatient, 100 to outpatient. And we get about a 25 percent return rate on the surveys, which is about average for this kind of survey.
And is that across, I guess, I'm looking at other hospitals in other areas, is that across the board that the same amount of surveys are sent out?
Yes. Well, depending on the facility, you know, the larger facilities, of course, are gonna send out more, smaller facilities will send out less. So, it depends on the return rate, but the survey questions are all the same regardless of what hospital you go to or what company sends them out. CMS determines the questions.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'm just bummed I didn't get a survey.
Well, you probably were not in there for the right diagnosis, cause the diagnosis related. Talk a little bit about our patient care and quality. This is our emergency room staff, besides the admission or registration staff, the next group of people that most patients see when they come into the hospital are the emergency room staff. And I have to be, to say that in the emergency room, we get very good scores for our customer service in that area. This are some of the things that we monitor on a regular basis, on a monthly basis. Adverse drug events, catheter-associated urinary tract infections, central line, central line bloodstream infections, early elective deliveries, falls and immobility, OB-adverse events, pressure ulcers, preventable readmissions, surgical site infections, ventilator-acquired pneumonias, and venous thromboembolisms. The medical field is known for its acronyms and its abbreviations, so if there's anything that I'm talking about that you don't understand, please don't hesitate to stop me. We report this, we monitor this on a monthly basis. We report it on a monthly basis to the state. And this is just the tip of the iceberg of the things that we monitor and report. We just finished with our performance improvement committee. We have a performance improvement committee that meets monthly and every clinical department reports quarterly. Non-clinical departments report monthly. And every department has at least two or three performance improvement areas that they're working on, that they report on. We're very busy with performance improvement of the hospital. One of the things that we've looked at over the last couple of years is patient falls. This is a big issue. Nobody wants their loved one to come into the hospital and fall and get hurt.
Go back to the previous slide. What are the difference in the colors? What do they mean? Say again, Counselor. In the previous slide, there's difference in colors and what do they mean?
This are whether we're meeting our goals. The green is we've met our goals, the red is we have not met our goals. The reds here, we did not start reporting this until August, so there, that's why it was red. And it has zero all the way across except for a few months here when we were just getting started and weren't quite sure what we needed to report. And then we had some education and so now we're back on track with that. Here, we are reporting and are not quite meeting our goals with catheter-associated urinary tract infections. We've had a couple and so we dropped from green to a lighter shade of yellow, I guess it is on the real slide. But all the rest of them, we're meeting our goals except for the preventable readmissions. We're not quite meeting our goal there.
Okay. So, what do the numbers mean? Is that a rating from one to five or is it?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, getting back to patient falls, the blue is Holy Cross Hospital, the green is all-state hospitals that are reporting on this, and the red is the national averages. And you can see, when we first started reporting on this, we saw that, we thought we didn't have an issue with patient falls. And then we started really looking at the data and collecting the data and we realized that, oh my gosh, we need to do something about this because we have a real problem here. One of the things that we found was that, number one, we were reporting falls to different places. They were going to risk management, they were going to quality, and then they were going to physical therapy. So, not everybody was getting the reports at the same time. We also didn't have a clear definition of what a fall was. You would think a fall is a fall is a fall, but, you know, when does a patient really fall? Does he fall when somebody assists him to the floor because he got weak and dizzy and somebody was walking with him down the hall? And is that considered a fall? Or is it a fall only when they're in the bathroom by themselves and they hit the floor and then they call for help? So, we had to have a clear definition, a standard definition of what the rest of the country was using for falls. So, we formed a team and came up with some standard definition of a fall, when we reported falls, who we reported the falls to, and what we needed to do when a patient fell. So, we've been working on this for the last couple of years. And you can see that our fall rate has really dropped. That trend line down instead of going from what we started out at 10, nine falls or more that particular month to less than, to about two falls a month now and falls without injury. We also had to define what a fall, when a patient fell, whether there was injury or not, and what we needed to do if there was an injury for that patient. This is some of the members on our falls prevention team. And we looked at everything. We looked at, like I said, when is it, when is it a fall? Who gets, who does it get reported to? What causes the fall? We looked at everything from bed spreads to the little socks that patients were wearing. We looked at signage. We looked at having sitters come in and sit with patients who were high-risk for fall, identifying those patients that were at high-risk for fall so that we had somebody with them all the time and had a plan in place for them so that they wouldn't fall and hurt themselves because there was nobody there with them. The other thing we're looking at is readmissions. Readmissions within 30 days for all causes. And so, again, you can see where the blue, the red is the state, is the national averages and the green is the state. And we were looking at why we were having so many readmissions. And you can see again that there is a downward trend. There is still work to be done with this. One of the things that we're looking at is working with our hospitalists to make sure that we're giving patients the correct information that they need to have before they're discharged, that we're making appointments for them with their follow-up or primary care providers for follow-up care, and that they're following up with that care when they're discharged home. We have a process in place where we're working with Taos County EMS where they do home visits and check on the patients and make sure that they're doing well, that they're taking their medications appropriately and correctly, and that they're, they followed up with their primary care physician. And you can see that we've had a slight decrease in the number of readmissions, but that's another area that we continue to work on. Surgical site infection rate, we have not had a surgical site infection since April of 2013. This is something that's been really important to us. And when you look at this slide, it's a little deceiving because it looks like in November we had a lot of infections. But what this means is that we report only those patients who have infections who have had a total abdominal hysterectomy or major bowel surgery. And so, in November, we only had two patients who had fell into that category and one of those patients got an infection. So, it looks like we had a 50 percent infection rate, but really there were only two patients who had that infection. But overall, our surgical site infection rate is nothing. We have not had any kind of surgical site infection since, like I said, in well over a year, since April of 2013. And again, this is a definite downward trend in that area. And then this is a picture of our surgical staff who have really worked hard over the last couple of years to keep our surgical site infection low. The other thing that we're looking at is the amount of time patients wait in the emergency room. I know that this is a hot topic in many areas and so we're looking at this and doing everything that we can to decrease this wait time in the emergency room. So, what this is showing is that the average time that patients wait in the emergency room, once they're admitted into the emergency room, before they're seen by a healthcare provider, whether it's a physician or a nurse practitioner or PA, is 29 minutes. And St. Vincent's, Espanola, and then the state and national averages for that. Average time patients spent in the emergency room, once they're seen by a physician, by a healthcare provider, and the decision is made that they're to be admitted, how long does it take before they actually get to their beds? And this is, for us, has been a long time. If you look at this, this is over five hours, the wait time. And one of the things that we're doing is working with our hospitalists to improve that throughput. They've changed the model of how they are seeing patients now. They used to see patients, the sickest patients first, and then see the patients who are getting ready to be discharged last. They've turned that around so that they're seeing patients who are getting ready to be discharged sooner. And the sickest patients, unless there's an absolute emergency or reason why they need to be seen first, they'll see them later in the day because they're gonna be there anyway, so there's no rush to see them first thing in the morning. If the patient is stable and doing well, then they'll, they can see the patients who are ready for discharge because those are the ones that are ready to go home. And that's been, another big patient dissatisfier is, I was told I was gonna go home and then had to wait all day before I was able to leave. So, now we see those patients early in the morning, discharge them as soon as possible, and open up space so that patients waiting in the emergency room can get into beds sooner. And finally, this last slide, I think, takes great people to deliver great care. That's the end of my presentation. Are there any questions?
Counselor?
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just point out to Ron, this is his first council meeting, and introduce Councilman Fred Peralta, who sits on the Holy Cross Board. And how do you do?
Welcome. Pleased to have you. Thank you, Linda. And, you know, again, you know, what a lot of the, I guess, our constituents in our community is, are looking for is open and transparent, you know, and we thank you for bringing these numbers to us and continuing to bring more and more information as time allows. So, again, thank you. And we look forward to working with you, Ron. Thank you. So, as we move on down our agenda, we'll go to item eight, citizens' forum. Citizens wishing to speak shall have the option to do so, and we'll limit that to five minutes. I know we have a couple of people that are, have signed up. I don't, I know there, is there anybody in the audience that wants to address the council? Please come forward and...
Sign up.
Go ahead. Just go ahead and have a seat and, yeah, name for the record and, right up here, so you have a mic, so we can, we can hear you and just pull it towards you if you want.
Hello? Yes, thank you. My name's Richard Brooks. I'm a concerned citizen. I live on Silent Road. I've been living here for 20 years. I spent 10 years out in the Mason Desert before the VA came through with my 100 percent disability. And I bought a condo right there on the corner of Linda Vista, San Territo. I walk around town a lot. I know it's not really a pedestrian-friendly patio. We've lost Luke recently. We lose people every year. Right now, Smith's parking lot is under construction. They're extending their parking lot. They tore down that building right there. I'm sure you all noticed. And what I'm concerned about is a little area, and I have photos I just took on my way here, where you come down the hill from the lake and you turn into Smith's parking lot after you drive over the culvert where San Fernando Creek goes by, by Heinz and Heinz' storage office. There's no sidewalk. There's no room for pedestrians. Years ago, I was on my bicycle and I was riding right up there and somebody decided last minute they wanted to pull into Smith's parking lot and brushed my front wheel. It was a close call. Anyways, I walk around a lot and I know, I went to the Public Works, I went to the county edge. Was going to the wrong place, maybe the right place. People need to know. I have photos. I'm not sure if you could hook them up. Right now, there's... Right now, there's a, there's a big orange sign right by the light that says, "Somebody will need to come to the construction." Where the building of a bus stop in there at the sidewalk. Or another thing, right there, that whole length, the sidewalk is about that high up from the parking lot, and it doesn't look like there's going to be a handrail. So I'm not sure what, maybe people drive off of there, fall off of there, or hopefully no one will get hurt. Can't figure anything else, but it's just a really bad spot.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks.
Yes, thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Right, Mr. Mayor. We are going to put a handrail the entire length once the bus stop is up along there.
Okay.
Just high, 48 inches.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I was thinking he probably would there, but...
And we also are looking at some additional improvements where you've indicated just north of that turn-in. We're involved right now with Department of Transportation on a highway corridor study along there. And I totally agree with what you're saying. We're looking at all of those elements and fixing them.
Yeah, there are quite a few people that walk, walk by there. And there is a space, there's a, there's a chain of defense around the open area where you look down into the culvert. There's a lot of trash down there. But the gate is open. I don't know if people go down there and sweep one. It's been dry for quite a while. It's just not a good area and hopefully in the future.
We're looking at the idea of a sidewalk that once we finish the walkway where we're putting in the, there's turnout now that would connect with that. But I think it would be a smarter move to also have it turn in just inside the fence at Smith's so that you would be up against the fence as you turn in rather than dumping you into the parking lot off the sidewalk.
Yeah, probably even, you know, they have those three big brothers and sisters collection boxes there. Those big green boxes right now, they're, they're kind of new, but that whole area could be a pull-in spot, you know? Anyways, thanks, thanks so much, Richard.
Thank you, Richard. Thank you for your expertise. Anyone else who'd like to address the board? The council? You are still connected.
That's the problem, trying to get out of here.
Stephen Salt. Good afternoon, Mr. Stephen. Some weeks ago, I came across a dozen empty prescription drug containers a few miles beyond the mouth of Taos County, Dr. Rio Fernando within Taos County on Forests Lane, not far from State Highway 64. There are dozens of them. Five look like this, seven look like this. The drugs in the seven containers were produced by five different manufacturers: Ambio Pharmaceutical New York, Hallpage New York, Malincroc Incorporated Hazelwood Missouri, Pharma Associates Incorporated Greenville South Carolina, Qualitest Pharmaceutical Huntsville Alabama, Sun Pharmaceutical, IND, which I think stands for India, O'Dara India, Caracol Pharmaceutical. All of the containers have different prescription numbers and different lot numbers. A dozen different prescription numbers, seven different lot numbers. All of them were packaged and, I imagine, also distributed by AS Medication Solutions. Internet address, www.a-smibs.com, Libertyville Illinois 60048. The drugs are combinations of acetaminophen and hydrocodone, acetaminophen and hydrocodone by tartrate, acetaminophen and codeine, diazepam, tramadol. All of the corporate manufacturers named ran the drugs they manufacture, the opioids, the narcotics, through a single package, AS Medication Solutions of Libertyville, Illinois. How is it that these corporations and their centralized packaging, and I imagine, distribution network had reached in such a potentially deadly manner into this community, our community? And I say, reached abusively into our community through agendas, methods, and strategies facilitated by and in the quote-unquote "person group" of corporate influence, money and power exercised at legislative and electoral events. The distress of abusive corporate money, influence, and power is real and must be addressed. But the heart of the matter lies in the notion, and it can never be more than a notion, that corporations are persons with the same rights and privileges exercised by individual citizens. For any court to maintain the legality of such a notion is an objectively abhorrent notion, an objectively abhorrent position. Abhorrent to the idea and ideals of the republican democracy, one person, the human alive, one vote. Corporations, fictions of law, are not deserving of the same rights, entitlements, and privileges exercised by the individual citizens of this nation. Corporations should exist only at a level subserving to the rights, entitlements, privileges, and wishes of the individual citizens of this nation. Such corporate abuse is the very issue at the heart of Town Taos Resolution 12-16. Town Taos Resolution 12-16 dated 14 February 2012, quote, "A resolution expressing opposition to the United States Supreme Court ruling Citizens United versus Federal Election Commission", unquote. States impart, quote, "Whereas the United States Supreme Court's ruling holds that corporations of people with free speech rights under the United States Constitution may engage in unlimited corporate spending in elections, and whereas Citizens United versus Federal Election Commission presents a serious and direct threat to republican democracy, and whereas the decision of Citizens United versus Federal Election Commission grants excessive power to corporate interests and threatens to overwhelm the voices of individual citizens in the political process", end quote. The resolution concludes by calling for an amendment to our National Constitution to, quote, "Restore democracy to our republic," end quote. I say the notion of personhood for corporations, the consequence of which is abusive corporate influence, money, and power are connected in a very real and direct way to the most likely illegal and certainly potentially deadly presence of these drugs in this community, our community. There are enough here to go around for the town, for the county, for the state police, and for the Forests. I'll see that the chief gets a cop, gets enough of these that, that some sort of investigation can be made. I'd like to know what the relationship is among these manufacturers and these, this distribution network. I think it's important that we find out how they got here. It's not important who used these. It's unfortunate that some individual or individuals used them. But what is important is how did they get here? How did they arrive in this community? If you're going to address abuse of power of corporations, this is the right place to start. Thank you. Gracias.
Stephen, before you leave, did you turn those over to, to any law official?
Not yet. That's what I, I'm going to say, I'll give, I'll give these to the chief after I'm going to draft a letter expressing the kinds of questions that I wish addressed, and I'll give them to the chief with that letter, and then we'll see what happens at that point. Okay? Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience like to address the council? If seen none, we'll go ahead and move on then to a public hearing and ordinance 1405 adopting a new zoning map. And this was continued from our September 3, 2014 meeting. Mr. Bellis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a matter most of you should be fairly familiar with right now. It involves property directly across, on Passado, across from Smith's. And the members of the various families that have an interest in the property were contacted by our prior attorney, Jacob Caldwell, as well as by Martha Perkins, and participated informally and as well as in the planning commission review process. Matter arises today, before I read the ordinance, in that in 1988, you have a copy of that resolution, both from the planning commission and the town council. It was a proposal at that time for potential development of this property as a chariot hotel. And at that time, it was proposed as a planned unit development, and the existing designation, which was RA, was increased to commercial to allow for that development. However, as you will see in the minutes at the very end of the 1988 planning commission minutes, as well as the final resolution that was presented, which is also in your packet to the town council at that time, there were certain conditions placed in which the understanding was that should this not, should this project not take place, that the zoning would revert. However, since that did not happen and that permission has expired, the zoning map has not been corrected to adjust for that. And Councilman Peralta provided myself and Councilman Hunt with a very informative history since he was on the planning commission at that time, of how it was clearly the intent of the town and the planning commission that these projects that had been granted special dispensation for more intensive zoning, but it never came about, that they be cleaned up over time, and that the zoning map reflect the original zoning that was on those properties. And the proposed map is also in the packet that you have. Would you like me to read the ordinance into the record, Mr. Mayor?
Please, Rick.
Ordinance 1405, an ordinance adopting a new zoning map. Whereas the Town of Taos Planning and Zoning Commission has been delegated the responsibility for review of all changes to the zoning map, which is approved as part of the Town Code, Chapter 16, the Land Use Development Code, an ordinance of the Town of Taos. Whereas the town council approves a zoning map as amended from time to time with zone changes and are incorporated into the Land Use Development Code by reference, made part of the code. Whereas a revised map shall be produced by the code administrator and town clerk at the end of each fiscal year. Whereas the town council determined it is necessary to update the Town of Taos official zoning map. And whereas the town council has considered the recommended changes, including the 16 acres on the corner of Camino de la Placita and Paseo del Pueblo Norte, and has decided to make 610 Camino de la Placita, formerly known as 610 Paseo del Pueblo Norte. 2.4 acres owned by the Summers family and 606 Camino de la Placita, 4.49 acres owned by Michael Searr, R14 multi-family residential. And the remaining approximately 13 acres owned by the Mitchell family as RA residential agriculture due to a previous error in 2006 official zoning map and input from property owners. Whereas the town council has considered the zoning that was part of the extraterritorial zoning from 2006 official zoning map and is including that zoning with the annexed parcels. Whereas the town council has made other changes it deems appropriate in the best interest of the town. Now, therefore, be it ordained that the governing body of the Town of Taos, meeting in regular session and after having held a public hearing on the matter, that the following zoning map pursuant to Section 16.04.080.2 maps is hereby adopted. This ordinance shall become effective as provided by law, ordained and adopted. Approve this, and obviously we'll change that date, October 14, 2014. In effect, this returns the zoning without changing, there were several other provisions in the original approval, which it appears there was a 50-foot easement granted to the Town of Taos as part of the overall action to allow the widening of Placita. And there was an easement granted also, and those conditions would not be reversed. Only the zoning is under consideration at this time. Dan for questions.
So there is, this is a public hearing, so if there's anybody in the audience who'd like to speak for or against this.
It's not a question. Speaking for or against it, I just have a simple question. In the future, will the town ensure that at the end of each fiscal year, as the code requires, that a new zoning map will be adopted and approved? I hope that will be done.
Anyone else? Okay. So we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and we'll go to council. Mr. Councilor Hunt?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we approve and adopt the new official zoning map, ordinance number 14-05.
We have a motion. We have a second to that motion?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, seen none, call for the...
Councilmember Hunt?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Hunt?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Peralta?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I'd like to ask that the planning commission look into the possibility that we need to make some changes to our zoning ordinance or development ordinance, that any approvals for special uses, alternative uses, or PUDs have a time limitation on those approvals before they basically expire and have to come back for reapproval, so that we don't have these sort of things sitting out there forever. And I'm speaking of that special chariot hotel, specific use of that, of that zoning approval, which is kind of crazy, but I just want to make sure that, you know, we don't have stuff out there that it does have expiration so that as times change and codes change, that they don't get grandfathered into something that doesn't, or isn't going to be good for the community.
Mr. Bellis, we can make sure we get that too. Can you move forward on something like that?
We will do that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So we'll go to us, then matters from staff, request from Alprodo Water and Sanitation to serve as fiscal agent. Mr. Bellis, I know that we had a request for this, and we have a gentleman from Alprodo Water and Sanitation, if you want to... Right here, Spine. The chief prefers we don't use that mic unless we really have to.
Oh, really? I kind of hate to have my back to the panel here. Yeah, I kind of wonder sometimes how you guys carry all that stuff around your middle. It's kind of crazy. But anyway.
Mr. Peter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members, for hearing us today from the district. As you know, or maybe you don't know, anyway, last year, the governor issued, in 2013, issued an executive order about various audits for public entities. There's awful lot throughout the state that didn't have their audits all up to date and all of that, and some things corrected. Anyway, we got caught up in that in the 2013 situation, and we had gotten an appropriation in 2013, but we managed to talk our way around that. But this year, we were very fortunate again that our state representative got us another appropriation, in tune of $80,000 for our water system improvements. But part of that bond sale was that because we had a finding in 2013 that our capital asset depreciation schedule was not up to date, they said, "You have to have a fiscal agent. Please go out and see if you can find one." And that's what this request is, whether the town would agree to serve as our fiscal agent for this particular project. And I had a little discussion with both the mayor and the manager and asked him if you would consider that at all. And so that's why I'm here today to ask you if you would sort of consider it. This particular project is under the auspices of the Environment Department, and they will be the ones that are basically, we are responsible to, that will be administering this project. And they have various forms that they require. One is a memorandum of understanding between whoever is our fiscal agent and the district, and a few other things. So I have some of those that are in place, but I first need to find out whether the town is interested in doing that.
Councilor Peralta?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Peter, going back to your comments about the update of your depreciation schedules, that what you're referring to, is that based on your annual audit, or how'd that come to be?
Well, we had a number of years there that we were sort of squabbling with the state auditors over whether we had to do an annual audit or we could do the tiered system. And we were finally told you have to do annual audits. And we were quite a ways behind, like seven years. That has all been corrected. That has all been corrected. Our 2014 audit is now finished, approved by the state auditor, and there were no findings this year. So we've corrected the schedule and everything is up to date. So from here on, we'll be fine on that if the governor continues to do this in future years.
Just for my own education, they're saying that you have to get a fiscal agent after, you know, you've got a clean audit and the ability to have managed your own grants before. They're saying now because of one particular area that needs to be updated, they won't let you do it?
Now, let me see if I can clarify a little bit. In 2013, we had one finding on our audit that we, that our capital asset depreciation schedule wasn't up to date. And what happened is these bonds were sold in June of 20, this year, 2014. At that time, our, you know, our 2014 audit hadn't been started or done. When, I can't think of the son's name, Mr. Lithgow, who was with the Environment Department accounting side of Corky Lithgow's son. Anyway, when he left down there, he had written down in May of this year that in order for El Prado to qualify for this funding that we got through the 2014 legislature, that we had to have a fiscal agent. Because as of June 30th, 2014, we had not corrected that. When we had our audits here in August of this year, the 2014, we corrected that. And that went into the state and the state auditor approved. From here on out, we should be okay. But for that particular 2014 appropriation, we have to have a fiscal agent. I, you know, talked to the Environment Department considerably about that. She said, "No, that was part of the requirement of your bonds being sold and you didn't get a fiscal agent for that particular project." I talked to her attorney and I said, "I thought the Attorney General Gary King said that she couldn't do that executive order." And he looked at me and he said, "She signs the checks, he doesn't. Suck it up and find a fiscal agent."
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of questions on this.
Mr. Rick?
On the MOU, the last paragraph, it says, "The MOU shall be in effect for the duration of the grant agreement and terminates if the grantee designates a new fiscal agent or when the grant agreement expires or the project is complete, et cetera, et cetera." One concern I have on that is the next item of business is for the council to amend an agreement as fiscal agent for the Village of Questa in which a similar provision of self-termination was available in there or should they become current. And DFA is insisting that if an entity starts as the fiscal agent for a specific project, that it finish out as the fiscal agent for that project. So, and then there's a second provision just above that, which you and I discussed, and I know you have an answer for that one, but I think we should have it on record. The fiscal agent shall not be compensated for any grant funds for services rendered or certified for services rendered during the term of this MOU or during the duration of the project. And of course, DFA has permitted the town and pretty much advised us that we should be charging an administrative fee of 2% for any of these contracts to, in the purposes of anti-donation, that our audit costs don't underwrite your costs as the recipient of that. So I guess my question is, you had represented on this that the MOU was boilerplate language that was from New Mexico Environmental Department?
Environment Department, yes, sir.
Okay. Now, on the fiscal agency fee, your board did pass a resolution, which you have available today, that would indicate they are willing out of other funds to reimburse the 2% fee.
I have a resolution here today would be authorizing this whole situation. However, it does not specifically say the 2%. In our minutes, we made a motion that we would pay the town 2% administrative fee out of our general fund, since these funds cannot be used for administration. So that is on record. And we can give you a copy of that. And we have no problem. And if you decide to do this, I would suggest that we have a little agreement drawn up. You can draw it up, you know, and present it to us on that 2% so that there is something in writing on that besides just, you know, our motions. But we actually have a contractor. That is no problem. We're very willing to do that. We understand it costs staff time to fiddle with this thing.
And so in the, in wanting to be fair to Mr. Painter and having been there myself, where the Environmental Department in particular is just ironclad about that their language cannot be changed. I don't believe that it prohibits us from receiving or El Prado from providing that administrative fee from funds other than the grant funds that are identified in this agreement. But, so I would ask that the resolution authorizing the mayor, should you decide to go in that direction, to sign on behalf of the council, would also include the provision that an agreement be drawn up between the two entities for the 2% administrative fee to be paid from general funds of El Prado Water and Sanitation District. And that also that flexibility be given to the finance director that she would not have to come back, and El Prado would not have to come back, that should DFA in approving this agreement, which we will have to submit it to, make a similar determination to eliminate the language that says until grantee designates a new fiscal agent, that the attorney, the fiscal attorney and the finance director would be allowed to make those changes.
Councilor Gonzalez?
Mr. Mayor, Rick and Mr. Painter, thank you. I just had a question for you with regards, and I know on our end, resolutions being non-binding, how does it work within the bylaws of your board with regards to issuing, issuance of a resolution or whether or not that's actually a legally binding contract? And then the other question, Rick, is how do we, I guess, work our way through that system of anti-donation without receiving funds directly from, from the grant itself?
That wouldn't be our headache. That would be El Prado's if they're paying it out of the general fund. We would be in compliance with Mexico Environmental Department's requirement. But your resolution is placing a condition, contingency on our willingness to accept that fiscal agency, that El Prado would have to provide some documentation, binding documentation to the attorney representing that they would honor these two points that we discussed.
And not that it wouldn't be, but just under the resolution aspect of that?
You want me to sort of get in on that? Anyway, when the district makes a resolution out there, that's pretty much set in concrete then what, you know, we're bound by that because all of our stuff goes on. But in this case, you will have, you would have a memorandum of understanding between El Prado Water and Sanitation District and the Town of Taos as far as how that grant would be administered. I just want to say this much, we will do basically all the work to it and, you know, bring in everything, hopefully fully in compliance, ready to go, so you don't have to spend a lot of time unraveling that. The district over the years has handled about $11 million in projects and we've never had a problem with anybody on the money or anything out. Nothing's ever been questioned, with the exception of a few years ago, there was an issue with a contractor that was very unhappy with us going to the state and raising hell about us misappropriating and doing all of that. That was totally, nothing came of that. The state auditor, the Department of Finance Administration, local government, and the New Mexico Finance Authority, that was all clear. Money was all accounted for, never was any problems. So that was all cleared up. So we've handled these projects. And no, this project is already designed. It's ready to go. So it's not something that we will fiddle around with. We'll get it done so that that issue doesn't come up about the time element on that, so. And we had appropriation, same kind of appropriation a year ago, and we had the money spent a month and the thing closed out a month. This one won't happen quite that quickly, but it will get done within a probably, I would say, hopefully a six to eight month period, eight months at the most.
But Mr. Painter, we need to be clear that since it creates an auditable potential liability for us, you can't, well, we're the fiscal agent. And I understand in this language is strongly ordered that you're doing the whole thing yourself.
No, 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 I understand that you're physically responsible for your, for the audit. You have to look over all of that.
So.
But I said, "We'll do the foundation work and all of that." And if there's, you know, and present it so you don't have to start at the bottom and do it all.
Do not go public with bids. Do not commit until our final.
No, 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 I understand that. We have to actually, I think the bidding process either is in conjunction with you or you do it.
We prefer that we do it.
Yeah, that's not a problem.
Councilor Gonzalez, did you have additional questions? That's it. Thank you. What suggestions, the council?
Mr. Mayor, something just occurred to me. If Councilman Gonzalez, at your point, it would, if you ever have a concern about the binding power of the resolution, there would be no reason that in your approval today, you direct staff to draw up a second MOU, which is specifically addressed to that 2%, any of these conditions we've discussed. So you can approve this today with the conditions you're stating. That allows Mr. Painter to go back and say, "We can start working on putting together this project." And we can draft a very short, one paragraph MOU for consideration of both parties to be adopted dealing with those other issues.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I assume that because you're doing this with Questa and maybe a few other entities, that you already had some kind of a boilerplate memorandum of understanding about your administrative fee.
Yes.
So we're happy to have you present that to us and go from there with that.
Okay. Councilor Peralta?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept the MOU with El Prado Water Sanitation District with the conditions specified by our manager concerning the administrative fee and also the DFA language if necessary.
Second, Mr. Mayor.
Motion, a second, does that cover everything that you needed, Rick?
Does council wish us to come back with those additional changes in the form of secondary MOU or?
No, I'm just saying that you'll do the proper paperwork to make sure that it's legal.
Understood.
Do you need the authority to sign that?
Yeah.
Yes. Mayor, you think that part of the motion?
Well, we're approving it with the conditions that it meets all the legal requirements of DFA and the necessary administrative fee. So once that is done, Mr. Mayor, you normally have authority to sign it.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? No, call for the vote.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Abstain. Just kidding, yes.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Painter.
All right. Just a couple other things here. We will need to know who you are designated, the person who we will be dealing with, because we have to fill that in on our grant agreement and all of that. So we will need a name here on that. And just for your record, I would like to, since you've now panned out our resolution and the memorandum of understanding that follows the Environment Department language, and they are very strictly want to use their language.
There's another question.
Yeah, there's two. That's a form, yeah.
I have the original memorandum of understanding that's been signed by our chairman of our board, Phil Stork Gonzalez. Who do you want me to give those to?
If you could provide that to the clerk and she'll see that.
Okay.
It's not your job.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Very appreciate this.
Thank you.
So we've got the revised members, try and beat, revised memorandum of understanding between the Village of Questa and the Town of Taos to serve as fiscal agent. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, council members, you can attach the red line version of what the state acting director has requested. And you'll just see taking out that one sentence under page two, under the effective date and term of pre-ment. And it states that this MOU will expire upon the complete expenditure and accounting of all proceeds of the 2013-14 state budgetary appropriation funds. And either party may terminate this MOU without any time, within 60 days. So the amount that was, the language that was taken out was, for the village becoming current in its financial audits and assuming the duties and responsibilities for acting as fiscal agent on behalf whichever reserve. So that's the only change that there was. And I feel like you would write it to the village administrator and we'll get that to DFA as soon as they have their meeting accepted. Question? No question.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Two seconds?
Two seconds.
Thank you. We'll coordinate with the Village of Questa and with Mr. Painter on the processes and procedures that we have to follow and work with them once our new coordinator, every person comes in.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any further discussion? None? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Any other matters from staff? None? Okay, Town Attorney's Board, amendment to council actions to purchase water rights. Mr. Rick?
Mr. Mayor, under prior meeting, you have approved the offer of purchase five acre feet from TCED City at the rate of $10,000 per acre foot for $50,000. Subsequent to that approval, in negotiating this final transaction, it became clear to us that there was an offer for the remaining 2.5 acres, the total of 7.5 acres, with $75,000. And that representative of council for the TCED City indicated that it would be considered financially to the advantage of them to be able to sell those rates and put cash towards operating expenses that are required and would be available or interested to purchase that. And so that is before you. Those are the only items. And I apologize that I thought council had attached to this the red line version indicating those two changes. But I'm guessing people thought they were so minor that we didn't attach the whole document. But no other language has been changed. It would just be that five acre feet to 7.5 acre feet and the total purchase amount from $50,000 to $75,000. Both are approved, Mr. Mayor.
Second. Motion and second, further discussion? None? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
We'll go on to matters of reports from the mayor and designation of an alternate. Mr. Bellis from the Taos Regional Water Plant Steering Committee?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This deals with an email that I sent out, I think about a week ago, to the mayor and council. And that, well, Rosemary Romero had made an earlier presentation in regards to soliciting members from all the jurisdictions that would be involved in the revision plan. Subsequent to that, they apparently didn't seem to be getting much of a response from the people, and we were the last ones on the list that she indicated that day. Nathan Sanchez at the Taos County, who oversees the Order Advisory Board, is actually the staff to be heard in that matter. So what they did is they designated the chief elected official of all the jurisdictions involved and any of the legal parties of record that were involved in the initial plan or in files of interest. And that is attached to this, and I had sent that to you earlier. However, it still requires that they're being alternated to the mayor, the chief elected official. I had a discussion with yourself, Mayor, and also with Councilman Hahn, who had expressed an interest in that, and indicated that because I had reformed the Order Advisory Board, which is the product of the first plan, and overseen that as well as assisted with Nathan and Alan Beal in the first plan. And I believe we, it is very important on this plan that the technical interests of the town are represented. And as you can see by that list, there were four more competing interests and two diverting water away from the municipal needs. And I believe if it's your wish, that I could give us a jumpstart having worked with all these people. these people previously, and we could show up day one prepared to protect the interests of the town as regards the council going forward.
Fells, I'm-
I would to wholeheartedly concur with our manager's assessment. I have a huge interest in this, and I'm not attending as a citizen or a council without necessarily having voting rights, but I think it behooves the town to have our mayor and manager, who have been in enlightened positions, to continue on with that. So I completely concur with our town manager in that.
Well, I have been well involved with, what was it, the county water board, before I was really attending any beach I can on water issues, so as a private citizen, I would also like to attend these, so if you could, you know, let us, give us a heads up on when they're happening. It's really exciting, I want to go.
So, Mr. Mayor, we will be listing these meetings, since who you'll be hosting them this round, we'll be listing them on our calendar, which you will be updated on.
Cool.
And then we'll just make sure that we get them advertised, because it sounds like there'll be a cor-. So I guess we need a motion to, I guess-
Well, I'd like to go ahead and move then, that our designated alternative, alternate forever, would be our town manager, Mr. Rick Bellas.
You have a motion, in second.
In second.
Second, any further discussion? None, call for the vote.
Councilmember Canto?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez? Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Go to matters and reports from the council, appointment of mayor pro tem.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to-
The reason I brought it forward, Mr. Mayor, is that when we approved it back in the first meeting of setting up the government for this year, when he said that mayor pro tem would be for six months, so the six months is up, and we're trying to work to do again, or change the time very wherever we want to.
And Councilor Peralta, I thank you for all the times you stepped in, and I wasn't able to attend some of the meetings, and you were there. Thank you, I mean, it's pretty tough sometimes when two things are scheduled at once, or you know, you need a day where you can do something with your family, and I thank you. It's, I know it takes some time on your part too, so I appreciate you.
It's been a pleasure. And, Mr. Mayor, I too would like to thank Councilman Peralta for his guidance over these six months. And furthermore, I'd like to go ahead and nominate our esteemed Councilman Andrew Gonzalez to serve as mayor pro tem for the next six.
You have a motion, in second?
No, second.
In second, any further discussion? Mayor?
On the bank accounts, we have four signatures, and it wasn't necessarily a mayor pro tem title on there, we just put Councilmember Peralta, and that's okay. Are we gonna just keep that, even though he still approved all payments and information? He just said they have signature 30. It's just that we'll have to change accounts again. So we have yourself, myself, Mr. Bellas, and Peralta right now, signature account.
You mean, you can keep all 30 papers I signed last time?
That would make us redo it.
Mr. Mayor, if, I don't know the usual procedures, but I think there's enough evidence for an exception in this case, and that, I don't understand, Mayor Peralta, I spent a whole day getting the benefit of your wisdom over the last 10 years on these other issues, that Councilman Peralta is also chairing the audit committee and oversees our financial procedures, and I think it's a good idea, if that person who's looking out for our checks and balances in our system also happens to be a check and balance to you and I, and can pick up things that maybe we're missing during the process. So if we could leave his signature on there, it'd probably keep the bank people from being a little less crazy, too.
I'm happy if she can, if you kiss the guns.
Okay, I just wanted to let you know.
Okay. Call for the votes.
Councilmember Canto?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Stand.
Councilmember Canto?
Yes.
Yes.
Any other matters, Councilor Peralta?
You know, Mr. Mayor, I would just like to get a report on total cost on the combo, whatever the name of that group was that came in in that Thursday night event, I'd just, I'd really like to see what, how it worked out financially.
Mr. Mayor, I think my original estimate was, I said around $15,000, and we added a few acts on there, there's a breakout on the back of that invoice, and then we did some of the other things, like lighting, and the group decided they wanted a different sound system. So this reflects an additional payment of $6,865.39 after GRT, so the total cost, I believe, roughly around $21,000, $22,000.
Does this, I'm sorry, does this include all advertising and stuff that we gave, or is this just the contract we had with Solar Fest?
That is just the contract with Solar Fest. We're weighting figures in regards to our overtime, which we will track for all our events from now on, and breaking up the marketing. We did the marketing, and also included the Paseo and the Fall Arts Fest, and did kind of block marketing solid to break that out for you.
Okay, I'm just trying to see what-
Yeah, I can say, well, we should have a final breakout of all the costs.
Good, thank you.
Do you want that brought back to you personally, Councilor, or do you want it brought back to me?
I would just like to have it in reading.
Okay. All right, we get that done, Bellas? Any other matters?
I'm out of this one, Mr. Mayor.
Will you?
No.
No.
While this is record, I don't pick up when we get it done. Sing and dance if you want to, Frank. Might be a little dance, I don't know, see.
You have a motion, Painter?
No. It's not, it's not my pocket.
Wow. We have second?
Second.
All papers, signature by Canto?
No.
Hi, yeah.